Please.
Mayor Roland Datsch.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Present.
Alderman Connie Ball. Alderman Mike Hansen.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Kerry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Sanction.
Here.
After the roll call, due to clericorum, and we are able to conduct the business of the City of Newport. Item three is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting was included in your packet. If you've been able to read through those or any questions, we entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll say it again.
We have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, regular session, March 8th, 2022. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor, I will, which I have none at this point. Any board member have anything?
Yes, Mayor, this is National Telecommunications Week, so if you would remember our people at dispatch and those that are, they're basically first responders as well, so this is their week. Thank you.
All right, next item is communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. On the COVID front, our numbers have bottomed out. We're back down to numbers that we haven't seen since last summer. There has been some movement up north with this subvariant two that's causing a surge there, but right now our positivity rate here is down to less than 2%, which is fantastic. I don't think it's been that low at any time during the pandemic. We don't have any employees affected by COVID at this time. We did remove the, blocking off two of the benches here, and the only bench, we still got the front bench blocked off, but we've opened those up, and we have reduced the mandates in city departments to where we're almost back to pre-pandemic operations. The only other thing I have is on the budget, we are pretty much done with the budget. The only thing that we need a little help from you guys on is in your, the sleeve, the pocket on the outer cover of your council book, there are requests in there that have come in this year for additional funds, either first-time requests from organizations or increase requests from organizations. And we'd like for you all to look at those, consider those, and to get back with us with feedback between now and next Tuesday, if you could, and that way we can get, we can finalize the budget and get it out to you by the end of next week, so you'll have plenty of time to study it between then and in the May meeting, which will be the first reading of the budget for next year. We, we've put a lot of time and effort into it, as always. Tina's done a good job putting it together, working with the department heads, and we, we feel really good about the budget that we're going to put in front of you again this year. But if y'all could do that, we'd appreciate it, and just contact myself or her and give us your feedback on these requests. And whatever the majority feels, we will look at it, either to add a new recipient or to, to increase current recipients. And some are for as little as 500 and some are in the many thousands. So, like I say, just look at them and get back with us, and we'll work from there. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Karen.
Coach.
I'd just like to make a comment. Every time we meet, you all make comments about, and the rest of all of them I do too, about the job that the department heads are doing. And if you, out in town, you see a lot of progress that's going on, so I want to thank especially Jeremy and you and the fire department for helping to get them burned in their fire. They had a fire, so I just wanted to tell all the boys that we appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. And item A is consideration of appointment of, to the equalization board, John Clark's term.
As you can see, Mr. Clark has resigned, I think, due to health issues, and Angie Shelton, the property assessor, has requested that Angela Husky Grooms be appointed to that position.
Would you vote on it?
Yes, it's a paid position.
I'll vote for Angela Husky Grooms.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to appoint Ms. Angela Husky Grooms to the board of equalization, to the equalization board to replace John, Mr. John Clark. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign.
Somebody said you need to say a special prayer for John Clark too, that he's having a little health issue, and keep him in his prayers, so.
Motion carries. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. I see none on the agenda, and we'll move on to item eight. Old business, unfinished business. Item A is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-05, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title V, Municipal Finance and Taxation, adding Chapter V, Grant Management Policy and Procedures.
Well spoken.
He usually adds it, he puts it in the caption, I guess I.
Did well.
You're going to forego it this time? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you've heard the proposal. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-05.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-05, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title V, Municipal Finance and Taxation, adding Chapter V, Grant Management Policy and Procedures. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries without opposition. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-06, amending the zoning map for the City of Newport to rezone location 257 Old Knoxville Highway.
And Mayor, the caption is a little different from that heading, so I'll read the caption into the record. It's ordinance number 2022-06, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the City of Newport from R-2 medium-density residential to C-2 general business district located at 257 Old Knoxville Highway.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to accept that 2022-06 amendment.
Okay. You need, if we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-06, it has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition. Thank you. Item nine is new business, and item A is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-07, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title, Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Four Permits, Section 8-401, permit required for engaging in beer business, privilege tax.
Mayor, this is a request that has come out of the Beer Board. Each year, each person or business with a beer license is required to renew their license, and there's a $100 fee for that, and there is a deadline for that. And every year, there's a few, not many thankfully, but there's a few that, that come in late and have to be pushed to get their, their fee in, to get their license renewed. And what the Beer Board is requesting is, they said that they researched, looking at how surrounding towns were dealing with it, they've consulted with Mr. Hurst, and what they've come up with is a penalty if you do not pay your fee on time each year to, to keep your license current. And it says if the privilege tax is delinquent, a penalty of $50 a day starting January 1st through January 10th. If the privilege tax is not paid by January 10th, the beer permit will be voided, and all beer must be removed from the property. If the business desires, they can reapply, but they will have to go through the process, just like any new business would. They can't just automatically renew it. They'd have to go through the, the entire application process again. And so that is at the request of the Beer Board.
Anybody have questions? All right, have you, you've heard the presentation and the reading of the ordinance? What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-07.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve on first reading of ordinance number 2022-07, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Four Permits, Section 8-401, permit required for engaging in beer business, privilege tax. It has been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, we need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansen.
Yes.
Alderwoman, excuse me, Luanna Audinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Beer Board.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Alderman Connie Ball.
You're going to stay, since you didn't hear it?
Well, I don't really know what's going on, so.
Can I abstain?
I will.
Or you can ask the mayor to explain to you what's going on.
He's fine.
So Connie, we have an ordinance amendment for the Beer Board ordinance, which imposes a penalty for being late, for not renewing your license each year. We've had several businesses, not several, but enough that it's been a hassle for the Beer Board to have to run down these people and, and get their licenses renewed, taking advantage of the situation, so this is to penalize those people if they do not renew on time. It's been, a motion's been made to approve the ordinance, there has been a second.
I can use that?
Okay. Is, did anybody, uh?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second then, this ordinance, we did, I think we did a roll call.
Yeah, we done, we did.
We had the roll call.
We did that.
All right, behind me. Thank you, Connie.
I used to do that a lot, Mayor.
Okay, do you have a motion on the board? It has been properly seconded, it has been approved. Please signify.
We've already.
We already had a roll call. All right, I'm still behind. I've called up.
Just one behind.
Motion, motion carries. All right. Item B is consideration of resolution number 2022-02, applying for fiscal year 2022, Community Development Block Grant.
I've had on a list for years now Jeremy-Fire Boat. This isn't for a boat that they actually fight fires in, this is actually for the River Swiftwater Rescue Team. This will buy two boats and a lot of equipment, is that what we? Yeah, yeah, and training, things like that. It is a small match because it's CDBG, but this will get a lot of that equipment that Jeremy needs for next to nothing cost us.
Okay, you've heard the presentation of resolution. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading, 2022-07.
Actually, Alderman, this would not be a first reading, this is a resolution, this requires a motion.
Consideration.
Yes, sir.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion then on the board to approve, getting back to my paperwork here. I'm still behind.
Consideration of resolution number 2022, applying for fiscal year 2022, Community Development
Block Grant. We have, the motion has been forwarded and has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye. Any, any opposed? Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item C is consideration of resolution number 2022-03, Administration Services for the Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, since it is a CDBG, the state does require consultant services to be used, and we sent out an RFQ a couple weeks ago, and like, staff recommends hiring community development partners, since we've partnered with them on several projects before.
The board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the board then to, for, to approve the consideration of resolution number 2022-03, Administration Services for the Community Development Block Grant. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
A nays like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Item D is consideration of resolution number 2022-04, Support Restoring Revenue Sharing Relationship Between the State of Tennessee and Local Governments, and to Return the Local Share of the Single Article Cap to Local Governments.
This should be fun.
Yeah, please listen closely, this could get a little complicated.
Okay, so in 1947, the state started a revenue sharing program with each municipality because of, with the, with the state sales tax that comes in. It was a 4.6% of the total, and it's based on what you get, is based on population, and there's a couple other demographic type things that factor into it. Okay, so that's been a relationship that's been in place for, you know, nearly 60 years. Nope, I'm bad at math, 70 years. And then in 2002, when they increased the state sales tax rate from 6% to 7%, they did not, they weren't giving, they weren't going by the 4.6% of the 100% of the sales tax rate. Okay, so what this, there's legislation in Nashville, it didn't start here, the mayor signed a mayor's petition of all the municipalities that have hopped on board. This is just a supportive resolution that asked them to pass this bill, which would then go back to us getting a sales tax share of 100% of the revenue collected, which, based on estimations, would be an extra $108,223.08, and that's if it stays steady from last year. If we happen to have a big revenue this summer, then it would be more than that. So it's just a supportive resolution to go to Nashville, to ask for this to be passed so that the revenue shares for all the municipalities go back to 100% of the state sales tax collected. Right? That's the way I think it goes.
I'll add a little bit to it. In 2002, the state of Tennessee increased the sales tax rate from 6% to 7%. At that time, they were sharing a portion of that sales tax, 4.6%, as Gary said, with municipalities. But when they increased it to 7%, they stopped sharing it, it all went to the state, they kept that share with the state. They also introduced a, a single, a single option sales tax levy, that is, that was customarily reserved for local government, and they can increase that from $1,600 to $3,200 for a single tax levy. So, and they kept that too. They're not sharing, sharing any of this, this new revenue with municipalities when before they were. So that's kind of where this all got started.
Yeah, some brilliant person figured this out. Every time you go to Nashville, and anybody that's been to the governor's conference know they constantly pat themselves on the back and talk about how good the state's doing because they're keeping all this money. This just gives a little bit back to me. And this is nothing I came up with, like I stole this resolution, I just found it reading one day, so it's not anything we initiated, it's just jumping on board with everybody else.
Tennessee Municipal League is, is on board with this, they're, they're one of the big sponsors. So they're, they're the ones that sent out the, the resolution and had all the mayors sign it. At last I heard, about 98% of all the mayors of the municipalities have signed this resolution, so it would be a big boost for us if we could, if we could get it passed. However, if the session is over, pretty much you're close to being over.
Close, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if they'll consider it this year, but we need to get it on the agenda as quickly as we can.
I'm sure it's just an oversight on the state's part.
Does it include any back pay for all those years?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That would be nice, Mr. Alderman, I think, but I don't think so. So you've heard the presentation and the resolution. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve resolution 2022-04.
I'll say it.
I'll say it.
Got stereo second, so we're good to go. Have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of resolution 20, number 2022-04, Support Restoring Revenue Sharing Relationship Between the State of Tennessee and Local Governments, and to Return the Local Share of the Single Article Cap to Local Governments. It has been properly seconded. I don't think we need a roll call on this one, so please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E is consideration of requests for annual events from Cock County Partnership.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
I'm just here to request permission to, for the events that we have downtown, to make sure that it's okay that we have them. What I've got is Rhythm on the River, and we're again going to have them every other Thursday, and they will start on June the 2nd, and they will end on July the 28th. And so we just want to ask permission to use Back behind City Hall and the River Walk for, for our city, for our concerts. Then we'd also like to ask for permission to use Downtown for the Newport Annual Street Festival, for, it's on October the 1st and 2nd, and 30th, no, and also September 30th, because we have to set up, and it takes most of the day. Then I'd like to bring out, we have, wanting to ask permission for our Christmas parade, but we're wanting to do it just a little bit different this year. We have had several, several requests over the whole time I've been at the chamber to have a night parade, where we moved our parade to Sunday. We felt like if we were ever going to try to, to have a night parade, it would be a good time. So I have called and asked numerous people, including Hugh Schultz, just to make sure that, like, we can have the security and the different, just so it'll work with all the different high school, to make sure that the parking lot will be open, and the street department, to make sure I can have the street sweeper. So I've tried to get ahold of every single person that we actually work with and it fits, and we've looked at, and we'd like to have it on December the 2nd, and that's a Friday night, and from 6:30 to 8:30. And what that will do is, the next day will be the Parrot's Will Parade, so we're kind of going to kind of have a kickoff to Christmas, starting with the Christmas parade, if you all will allow that.
Would, how, how has the daylight saving time change affected that, if any?
That, it'll, it should be dark, is that what you're asking?
Well, will it be dark at 6:30 in December 2nd?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to approve these one by one or as a package?
We can do it as a package.
Do it as a package, okay. All right, you heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry. Let me start.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to, for consideration of requests for the annual events from Cock County Partnership. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, motion carries.
Did we vote? We did.
Can I just add one thing?
Also, we just really wanted to do everything we could to make sure that this was really what would work with the people, so we also put a survey out, and the majority of the survey, they wanted to even to try that, so.
I remember when I was younger, we, they used to have a nighttime all the time.
Monctown does theirs at night, and it's really cool.
I just hope it's not too cold.
So Mayor, we need a vote.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion on the board, it's been properly seconded, please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign.
What time do you say it would start? Six.
6:30.
6:30.
And October the 1st and 2nd.
December, oh, that's the street festival.
The street festival.
The street festivals, but the Christmas parade is December the 2nd.
Okay. Motion carries. And thank you, Lynn. Consideration of purchase of woodland property. Miss Fincham.
Mayor, thank you, sir. At the last meeting, you all granted me permission to negotiate with the property owners on the 93-acre tract over behind the, the main city park about the possibility of purchasing that property to make an addition to the main city park. It would be used for hiking, bicycling, picnicking, those, those types of activities. And so myself, the mayor, and Councilman Smith met with two of the three owners, and after much negotiation and, and pleading and peddling to the best of our ability, we got the owners down to $5,000 per acre. And they did make the offer that we could pay half of it out of this year's budget, half of it out of next year's budget, with no fees or interest accrued on that. And I, I feel like that is, as far as we can get them to come down on it, and I also feel like that's a very fair offer for the, or, or request price for the property, based on the commercial value of portions of it. And so it would be my recommendation that we accept that offer, and also for the record, I want to be very clear that we are funding this with COVID grant money. No local monies are being used for this project. It's all being done with COVID grant money. So as I mentioned last month, I feel like it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we have those funds available, and there's a piece of property available that we could expand our park system to include something of this nature that would be a real benefit to the community as far as recreational value.
Did you ever get the right-of-way worked out or anything?
Well, I've not done anything till we own the property. Now, there is a, one thing I did learn is there is a right-of-way up off, above Rice Street, near the water tower, that goes, a 50-foot right-of-way there already in place, that goes out onto the top of the ridge that's on the property. But the, the sticking point is still the piece of property in the trailer park behind the city park that is between the woodland property and the main city park. That's, that is something that's still going to have to be ironed out, but, but without us, you can't try to get a right-of-way to something you don't own, so till, till we, but till we have the property, then we, we don't have any way to go after a right-of-way.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the second. They made on that property.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of purchase of woodland property at, based on the information that Mr. Fincham just gave us, it's been properly seconded.
Roll call on that.
Yeah, it's been properly seconded. We would now leave roll call. Yeah. It's been properly seconded. We will now leave roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you, Tina. Motion carries. Item G is consideration of donation to Cock County High School swim team.
Mayor, recently, back, well, back into, further back into the winter, I was approached by the swim team, the Cock County Swim Team, who utilizes the community center for their meets and practices and so on. And there was concern about the diving platforms that are there at the pool that they use. There's six of them. And they had looked at wanting to replace those. And the cost to replace them was $6,000 each. And so I told them that was a lot of money for the, to look at the city footing the bill for it for them because they're basically the only ones using them. And so they went back, they checked around about getting them refurbished, putting new platforms on them, but sandblasting the stand portion, the sport portion, getting new bolts and so on. And they ended up with a $5,500 cost to do that. And what they are requesting, and would be my recommendation that we do, is $2,500 from the city to help with that cost of refurbishing those platforms. And they are going to raise $3,000 from other sources to fund their part of it. And so that's a pretty good deal. And since it is, our swimming pool and our facility, I think it would be, that's a fire request, ask us to fund a smaller portion than they're funding to get them redone. And so that, my request would be that we approve $2,500 to help refurbish those platforms.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve the donation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of donation to Cock County High School swim team in the amount of $2,500. It has been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion?
Tim, you satisfied that?
Yes. I think it's a win-win.
Okay. Then we need a roll call. Tina, please.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries without opposition.
Thank you.
Item 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for the Newport Fire Department for fire hose.
Yes, board. What we're looking at is, we've done some hose testing here in the past, and we've had several hoses that failed. And as we were looking at it, a lot of the hoses we had are from the 90s. And some of those still pass. And so what I would requesting is to replace that hose and also to purchase hose for the new truck that's coming while we're getting it into lump sum. The amount is around $24,000 with shipping and stuff. I'm not really exactly sure it's, but what I'd be asking for is $24,000. And this money will be coming from the grant from the COVID money as well. Like I said, they're, what we're replacing is from the 90s, 93 to 97, so some of it's 29 years old. Now, some of this did test good in our hose testing, and if you guys approve this, we would like to donate this to some of the volunteer departments because they, as I spoke with them, they have hoses that are much, much older than that. And the hose, the hose will be coming through MES as a company, and they have an existing government bid through Sourcewell Cooperative Contract.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the bids for the fire department.
I'll second. You're in, second.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the board then for consideration of bids for the Newport Fire Department for fire hose in the amount of $24,000 to be funded out of the COVID funds. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries without opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 is comments from citizens. Anyone wish to be heard?
If I could interject, please. I've got a young man coming forward here. I waited to introduce him to you all, told him at least he's got his certificate from the academy. You talk about brand new. It just arrived today, but he feels right. But this young man did a great job. He went, completed the academy up at Walter State in Greenville. He is right now in our field training program, and he's doing us a good job learning fast. We're very proud to introduce to you Alex Reese.
Welcome.
Welcome. Is he old enough to carry that?
We could even buy one if he did. He's good to go.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Citizens?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to thank the council members that donated to our softball organization. We had our fundraiser last week and raised enough money in that within six, seven weeks, we're going to have a building up there. If you go by, we've got concrete that Humble donated. We've got their beams going up waiting on the trusses. So thank you all for your support.
Anyone else?
What we wrote down May 2nd is going to be the opening day for Little League baseball in our community.
Anyone else?
How are you coming along with the project up there from the community center, right?
It's, 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 it's trice, but overall, it's, it's moving on. We started some stuff today on the landscaping part of it this week, so hopefully everything's going to end up, we were thinking late June, but it could be August. So we're moving on. Getting the contractors there is what's, it's been tough on that end.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. If not, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to make it since I was little. We're going to get an overtime.
I'll make that.
Do you have a second? Did we get a second? Okay. We are adjourned.